The Segoviet itself never recognized the idea that you all were overlooked all this time. Was this just about trying to finally righting a wrong, or what did it feel like to you?
Hi.
Councilwoman Dolan is in transit.
Yes, she is. Indoors, though, indoors.
Yeah, luckily, gosh.
Hi, Kristen.
Hello, Austin, how you doing?
Good, how are you, Mick?
A blizzard day. I had my head in crack all day, a little little out of it, too much assessing today.
Are you normally going into school every day?
Yeah, we're on the hybrid plan, so it's a tad bizarre, but there we are.
Mick Marjorie is in attendees, and if you could make me co-host.
Of course, just a second. There we are, and...
Okay, and bring Suger on in, too.
How's everybody doing?
Good, how are you?
Surviving in the snow.
I haven't gone outside yet. That's why I was...
Not a bad idea.
My southern family is very excited for us, but they don't have to move it later.
Exactly.
My dad doesn't shovel. He always says, "God put it there, God will take it away." He just puddles through.
You better clear his sidewalks, or he can get fined.
They don't have them.
Nice, nice.
Yeah, he lives down in the north end of town, there's no sidewalk.
That's nice.
I'm gonna go to, I'm gonna ask God to please take the snow away from my driveway today, please, please, Lord.
He's in our attendees. So is Rick. Austin, is that your house?
Yeah, it's my picture window out there in the back, yeah, absolutely.
Nice.
Stopping by Woods on a snowy evening with...
Absolutely, yeah.
Kim, I know we just talked, but I was just thinking, maybe the reason for we can't seem to grab Mr. Glaurs and bring him into the meeting, and we don't know why. But I'm thinking, no, I can't, never mind, I was thinking about because of his name, but he's always on his phone, so I don't, I just can't figure out. Mr. Glaurs, please text if you wish to or raise your hand if you can do that on your phone. We seem to be unable to bring you into the panelist for reasons we cannot understand. So apologies. All right, that was Mr. Glaurs, okay, very good. Okay, and so sorry for the delays. We'll get going. Ms. Renta, I will call to order this meeting of the Hand and Leadership Council at 7:11. Ms. Renta, can you take the role, please?
Ms. Spies?
Here.
Bonnades?
Here.
Mr. Caesar?
Here.
Ms. Klaus?
Here.
Ms. Dolan?
Here.
Mr. Farmer?
Present.
Ms. Horsley?
Here.
Ms. Gary? Mr. McDowell? I'm gonna acknowledge him here because his...
He was, he was there, he's probably just...
He was, and yeah, his screens. Mr. McGary?
Present.
Ms. Row Lewis? Ms. Row Lewis...
It seems like she's been connecting for a while. Yeah.
Oh, how do I mark that?
Let me just say that she's...
Tentative.
Yeah, I'll see if I can get a hold of her.
Ms. Shoemaker? Mr. Weber?
Present.
Ms. Wetmore?
Here.
Eleven definite present.
And kind of a halfway?
Yeah, eleven and a half present.
Yeah, Ms. Row Lewis says she's trying, hopefully she's able to get in. And hopefully we don't lose anybody, it is still windy out there in pretty unpleasant. I will have our pledge of allegiance a moment of silence, and during a moment of silence, we hold in our hearts, you know, as we continue dealing with you know, our COVID-19 pandemic, we hold in our hearts the victims and families of folks who are suffering through the pandemic and its effects. So we'll have our pledge of allegiance, and Dr. Horsley, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance and to their purpose, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Horsley. We will open our public input session, I would just like to say there was a lot of effort to try and get public oral public input for this meeting, and a lot of thanks to Diane Hoffman and Phil Cronin for helping out, and for Sarah Clark for trying to, working with us to establish protocols, and you know, I think we're pretty close to just, you know, having the system set and ready to go. But there's still some things to iron out, and we're having a meeting, I believe, Wednesday, Ms. Renta. Again, to sort of clarify, so we will have in-person public input for next meeting, and so please keep an eye out, folks, who would wish to deliver their input that way. We'll stay still, public input via email, of course, but we'll be implementing that at the next meeting, definitely. I also, I guess this is a relatively appropriate moment to say I want to give some thanks just for having our agenda together. I'm mindful sometimes you know, showing my age, when I remember the old water ballet movies, those, what were they, Bugsy, Bugsy Berkeley movies, where the people are you know, making these incredible, beautiful, you know, swimming sort of dances. And you see water ballet competitors, you know, they're all smiles up top, but underneath the water, their legs and their hands are moving a million miles a minute. And while Ms. Renta and I might not be all smiles all the time, the behind-the-scenes work that happens, you know, Ms. Renta getting this agenda out, you know, we tend to forget in this time of COVID how difficult it can be just getting communication, getting paperwork done. You know, the town, all municipalities, all government is designed to function fairly, but not necessarily, you know, quickly. And you'll miss Renta, Mr. Donnelly, and Ms. Smith getting the information that we needed to even have this meeting, you know, Thursday and Friday. They really put in a lot of effort, and Ms. Renta put in a lot of extra time outside of her work hours, as did Mr. Donnelly, as did Ms. Smith, so so thank you to them, thank you to the folks who are helping us establish our protocols. A lot of work was done, we just were not quite there, but we'll definitely be for next time. So thanks to you, to those folks, Mr. Cronin, Ms. Hoffman, and Ms. Clark, and again, Ms. Renta, Mr. Donnelly, and Ms. Smith. It was difficult getting all the volume of paperwork done, but they did, and much appreciated. So it is time now for our public input session. We'll take, what do we, we have ten pages worth, Ms. Renta?
Yeah, eight comments, ten pages.
Ten minutes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Farmer?
About ten, fifteen minutes.
I was thinking fifteen minutes, that gives people time, a couple of the letters are a page or two, I think, so when we take ten, fifty minutes, Ms. Rental will put up the link for folks. And Ms. Renta sent around the public comments, if anyone needs to see them, again, please email Ms. Renta, she can send them to you. And Ms. Rental put the link on the screen so that folks can see them. Right at this moment, go to handen.com. So I'll open up our public input session at 7:18, and we will close it in fifteen minutes, and so we'll move on at that time. Uh, and we will, uh, close it in 15 minutes. And so, um, we'll move on at that time. All right. That is our public input. I do recognize, um, Miss Renta was trying, um, to get a, a link available. Uh, so that people could go over to hamden.com. I'm not sure that we'll be able to provide a clickable link. Or at least we weren't able to tonight, but, uh. We'll work on that as well for, uh, next time around. But if anyone does wish to see the public input, it is posted on hamden.com. Uh, with the Legislative Council posting it is, it's there. I don't know if we'll be able to. But the researcher, we can provide a clickable link via Zoom, um, for that. I'm, I'm not sure we'll be able to, but we'll attempt to. So that is our public input. I will open up our report of the president.
Point of, point of, uh, point of clarification, uh, Mr. McGarry, you may want to think about doing. You may want to think about doing a Google Doc for that with a link to it. Maybe they can access it through the Google Doc.
Well, we'll have to explore some.
Yeah.
Some ways to kind of get around it, uh, so that we can have, um. So people can eat more easily get there. Well, we'll, we'll, we have a couple of weeks to think about it. We'll try to come up with something. Um, so I want to begin, I was remiss before in mentioning, uh, you know, that Miss Renta, Miss Dol, uh, Miss, uh, Mr. Donnelly. And, um. I'm forgetting. Well, I was forgetting was brewing. Uh, this group and also put in a lot of extra time in order just to get our, uh, oh, Ms. Smith and Ms. Ruin, just to get our agenda. Uh, pro- posted in the paperwork process for this. It was just, uh. Uh, the timing of it was difficult, uh, but they all put in a lot of extra time and were able to, uh, get this, uh, completed. So a lot of thanks to them. And I also want to say, um, you know, a lot of thanks to, uh, Mr. Curtis Seaman, who, you know, we saw in our public input, there's a lot of. Comment to concern about the personnel changes. Uh, I want to just say from, uh, my position, I think I can speak for most council people here. That, you know, we, uh, we're very happy that Mr. Eman has found a place, uh, within on the Hampton team still. Uh, that it is, you know, very good that he is staying with us. Um, and I think it's going to be very important, uh, you know, as we work through our financial difficulties and challenges. We're going to need both Mr. Even and Mr. Jackson, uh, to do the very best that they can in their positions. So while I'm very pleased that Mr. Jackson is joining our team, I'm just as pleased that Mr. Eman is maintaining a position. Uh, with the town, and I hope that his, you know, skills and creativity and, um, insights are helpful in our economic development. I say we will need. All hands on deck, um, as we work through our difficulties. And the other thing, of course, uh. You know. Perhaps most importantly of all, uh, you know, today is the first day of Black History Month. Um, and I did ask to get some information from the, uh. Uh, from the administration about, you know, what we've been doing. Uh, we all, you know, we, I spoke last time about us, you know, recognizing our truths and we must recognize truth. You know, that, um, white privilege exists, systemic racism exists, and these things must be challenged. And they must be rectified. And, you know, what steps can we take to do that? And some of the concrete steps, I'm, you know, still, uh, you know. Very happy about the fire department's efforts in creating a scholarship, uh, for a Hampton High School student, um, a student of color. To, um. Uh, to get a scholarship for if they are interested in becoming EMT. Uh, I've also found, uh, today, Mr. Caesar and Mr. Highsmith over at the high school are also developing a plan. Not, not quite like the, uh, fire department's plan, but a plan, uh, to, um. To partnership with, uh, Hampton High School in getting students from Handis High School, specifically students of color. To work at during the, um, summer program that Public Works, uh, has to employ lots of part-time students. So we can get students to come in and, um. You know, see what public works, what that kind of career has to offer. Um, and I think that would be a, a wonderful thing to do to, uh, get access going. Uh, there's also plans to have a, uh, to consider waiving the application fees. That might be a barrier to entrance to some people. Uh, in looking at a career in the public works department. Um, there are training available, uh, in the public works internally. Um, so you know, the, the kind of, uh, uh, training that, uh, the fire department was funding might not be available, but something. That we can do, uh, maintain internally. Uh, there's also plans for, uh, the Cornell Scott Health Center to open up a, um. Well, a center here in Handen. And I think that would be an excellent, uh, Mr. Sendroff at the key centers working in that, and that would be a very good development. Uh, and there's been, um, you know, as, uh, hopefully folks know, you can get your, uh, COVID testing at, um, the board then building. On Tuesdays and Thursdays. So I hope folks are taking advantage of that. And, um, you know, and I've asked the administration to keep us updated on other efforts. Uh, to address issues of equity and diversity in our town, and hopefully we'll be hearing more from them in the future. Last year I marked, uh, the beginning of Black History Month by, uh, reading a poem. You know, some folks don't find poetry to be perhaps their, uh, cup of tea or find it, uh.
It is certainly a pleasure to work with you again and with him again. And you do have a, a robust agenda. So with no further ado, I would turn it over to Mr. Nearing.
Thank you. Mr. Nearing, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you very much. So given that I have 15 minutes here, I'm going to go through it fairly quickly to.
No, Mr. Nearing, to, to clarify, you have, take all the time you need. Afterwards, we'll have 15 minutes of questions for you, clarifying questions. If anyone has some real, you know, in-depth that would require an extraordinary answer, I would ask them to email them to you. But as we go, folks might have just sort of questions to clarify. We'll take 15 minutes of time to do that.
Okay, sounds good. Okay. So I assume everybody can see my screen I'm sharing. Good. All right. So, um, very briefly, the agenda is going to basically cover the, the summary of the July 2020 valuation, going to key results, some historical results. And then towards the end of it is a, is a projection looking forward for the next 20 plus years or so. So the highlights comparing last year to this year, the current fiscal year that we're in, you can see that the, the recommended town contribution for the fiscal year that's going to be ending in about six months or so here, the, the contribution is up to 23.4 million compared to 23.2 million. So a slight increase, $200,000. This first page is just kind of a couple high level bullet points of where that increase is coming from. So you can see the very first bullet point being the, the recommended contributions was increased by about $400,000, basically due to just the, the scheduled increase in the amortization payments of 2% annually. So that's kind of a, a built into the funding method of the pension plan. $400,000 is just expected due to that method. There is another $300,000 generated by essentially the town contributing only 82, 83% of the recommended contribution for the prior fiscal year. So essentially if it's not, you know, if the town did not contribute 100% of that 23.2 million last year, then essentially that shortfall needs to be made up by additional contributions in the current year, and that's about 300,000. Then the last bullet point, about $400,000 increase was due to actuarial gains and losses throughout the year. So a couple of bullet points here, the returns, investment returns, less than the 7% assumption, fewer deaths than expected, the retirees living longer than expecting, so that the benefit payments continuing for them, slightly larger salary increases than expected, and more guardian retirements than expected, which generally if the, the, the police or fire are retiring earlier than expected, there's some subsidy in the, the benefits and that results in actuarial losses. And then also the, the CPI, the actual increase due to the, the COLA calculations being higher than the assumed 2.25. All of those bullet points combined to increase the contribution about $400,000. So you look at this, this first page here and overall it's increasing the contribution of about 1.1 million compared to the prior year. So obviously there's got to be some decreases, some offsetting, and you'll see that on the next page here. So some increasing, meaning the, the gains, if you will, on the actuarial side, $700,000 was a reduction to the required contribution due to the adjustment of the retirement benefits for retired participants and surviving spouses to align them with the plan provision. So this is all related to the, the cost of living, the COLA increases in the past and just a realignment with the plan provisions of the, of the town. Second bullet, there's a lot of bullet points on here, sub bullet points. Essentially what we're, we've proposed over the last couple of years is something called an experience study. And it's essentially taking a look at the actuarial assumptions that we set from year to year and comparing that to the actual experience over several years. We look at a kind of a very quick review of the actuarial assumptions every single year. But it would be very helpful for the, the town to kind of do a formal experience study, if you will. And it's actually part of the, the Gatsby's best practice is to do a, a formal experience study every five to six years to essentially, you know, compare the actual experience of the plan to the actuarial assumptions and make sure everything is, is pretty reasonable. Related to this, it's important to note over the past prior couple of years, when we've done the actuarial valuation, the actuarial gain or loss has been very, very small. Meaning that the, the actual experience has been pretty, pretty decent compared to the assumption. However, as I just noticed on the, noted on the, on the prior page here, there was a, a fair amount of a, a loss in this current fiscal year related to actuarial experience. So I think it's a, it's basically time for an experience study should be done pretty soon. So essentially you look at this $700,000 gain from the, the, the retirement adjustment and then another $100,000 from here. There's another 100,000 of other increases. And essentially that results in the net increase in the benefit of own, of the required contribution of only around $200,000. So switching over to kind of the demographic side of things, you can see that the, the number of active participants declined about 10%. It's not too much of a surprise. The plans closed to, to new guardians in 2006, to new service employees 2007. So as expected, the, the number of active participants in the plan continues to decline. And, and you'll see some projections a little bit later on, on in the presentation, long-term projections of where we're expecting the, the active population to go. Also, the, the average age and average service of participants in the plan is, is relatively high. If you had an open plan, as people retired, you'd be obviously replacing them presumably with new hires. And that, that would keep the average age and average service of the plan probably lower. So based on these average agent service, this is more of a, you know, a maturing pension plan. Switching over to the, to the retirees and beneficiaries, these are people in payment status and it increased almost 4%. And you can see the average age and the average benefits there. And the, the kind of the highlight here is the $28 million in benefit payments for the 2019, 2020 fiscal year that just ended. I'll have some more presentation of projections of what that number is going to look like in, in future years. So one thing that's pretty remarkable, given the size of the pension plan and all of the volatility that we've seen, especially during the first half of the 2020 calendar year. All of these numbers, you can compare 2019 to 2020. All of the numbers are pretty similar. You can see that the, the employer normal cost, that's the cost of benefits accruing during the fiscal year. 2.4 million in the prior year, 2.2 million this year, very small decline. That's directly related to the number of active participants still accruing benefits as that number, as we saw on the previous slide declines. You'll see that, that normal cost number come down as well. Amortization of the unfunded, just over 20 million last year, 20.4 million this year. So you can see relatively speaking, the recommended town contribution is only up 200,000, as I mentioned earlier. And that's, that's a pretty small impact, again, given all the volatility that we've seen so far. So down below you can see the, the, the details here. Want to point out just kind of something interesting from a big picture standpoint. Want everybody to think about how a pension plan is funded. It's funded by obviously the employee and employer contributions into a pension plan. And the other thing that really funding comes from is investment returns. So to the extent that the investment returns are positive, you've got more money to use towards paying out benefits. So the interesting thing here is everything is kind of added balancing point where essentially the, the investment income in the past year was around roughly speaking, maybe $10 million. You throw in the about $19 million in contributions from the town. And you get to around, you know, the 28, $30 million total inflow into the pension plan. And you compare that to what I just mentioned earlier, the outflow out of the pension plan of about 28 million. So overall, the, the, you know, the cash flow in and out of the plan was relatively stable, a, a net of about zero. So you can see that there's not much movement in the, the assets from, from one year to the next. So taking a look back a little bit, just as a refresher, the actuarial value of assets is a, essentially a smoothed market value over a five-year period. So to take out some of the bumps in the market, the ups and the downs where market returns may be really, really good some years. You can see 2011 stands out on this chart right here that 2011 was a very, very good year. You see 2009, obviously not a very good year. So the, the dark blue line is the market value of, of assets, the return bouncing around. And then the actuarial value, in theory, the goal for that is to kind of smooth out those, those bumps in the market. And you can see essentially the, the lighter blue line is staying within the highs and the lows of the, of the market return. Couple of different ways to look at the, the historical funded level of the plan. So you can see the, the unfunded actuarial accrued liability. So the liability minus the assets, you can see they, they've hovered over the last three years just under 300,000. So it, excuse me, 300 million. So it, not much movement. But again, this is all related to the fact that the, the inflows into the pension plan, investment income and contributions are more or less equal to the benefit payments coming out of the plan. So not much movement there. And on the right side, you can see the funded ratio of the plan remains between, you know, roughly around 30, 36 or so percent funded for the, the last several years. So that's kind of a look back at the history and where's the plan going into the future. So this is a very interesting chart. I'm not sure if we've ever shown this projection specifically in the, the two different main populations of the group, your active participants and then your retired participants. But this is pretty significant where you can see the, you know, the number of participants in the plan, active participants just under 300. There's a, a sharp decline and essentially over the next 10 years, the, the participants, again, active employees in the plan projected to drop by 67%. That's, that's pretty significant. You can see you go out even further there and only a few people remaining in the plan. This number more or less directly corresponds to the normal costs. So to the extent that a few pages earlier, I talked about the normal cost of the plan is the cost of benefits for actively accruing participants. You can expect that number to come down pretty significantly as well over the, over the next 10 years. How's that look on the pay status side? So on the pay side aside, obviously those actives don't just disappear. They, they retire, they terminate, they take their benefits and they move into the pay status category. However, you can see that there's not much of a bump up. You know, the number of retirees is increasing slightly over the next couple of years. And then it does kind of reach a peak as the new retirements outpace the, the number of deaths for the first couple of years. But then essentially you're going to have more retiree deaths start outpacing any new people coming into the retirement status. So you'll start to see a decline in the headcount of the people in pay status. And it, you can see up to, to year 2050 here, it's pretty significant where it's almost, you know, it's, it's cutting into about half of the, the high point. However, if you take a look at the next page here, you can see the peak of the benefit payments were several years away from, from that peak. So as I mentioned earlier, currently in the current fiscal year, expected benefit payments of about 29 million coming out of the plan. That continues to go up for the first couple of years, essentially because of the, the increase in the number of retirees. But the main reason it's continuing to go up is really due to the, the COLA, the cost of living adjustment that's built into all of the, the retirees' benefits. So even though the number of participants is going down, they're still going to be, you know, continue to increase, peaking at about $41 million before it slowly starts to decline down to, you know, roughly 29 million, back to where it started as we are today. So what does all of this mean? The, the movements in the population over the next 20 plus years or so to the recommended contribution? So again, if, if all assumptions are met, everybody retires when we expect to, expect them to retire. Salaries follow, follow the actuarial assumptions, turnover, mortality, all of that experience works out exactly as the, the current actuarial assumptions are set up. You can see the, the contribution pattern, expected required contribution pattern over the, the next 20 plus years or so. So essentially it's, you know, just over 23 million currently with an expected peak to 32 million. Again, part of the reason for this increase is this 2% annual increase built into the amortization. So it's more or less ramping up. As you get closer and closer to the end of your amortization period, you've got to pay, you know, the, the cost as a dollar amount goes up. And again, just a reminder for the council, the, the 2% is more or less supposed to kind of mirror the, the town's general budget and, and revenue available. So as the revenue available is expected to go up, then the, the cost as a percentage of that revenue is in general, hopefully remaining somewhat level. So the, the one thing I remember a question from a couple of years ago is, you know, what happens to this endpoint when we're out to $32 million if the actuarial assumptions are not met? You know, does this line instead of dropping off? When at the end of the amortization period, is the, is the town expected to have a, you know, continued required contributions of 32 million in future years? And the answer is essentially no. If the amortization period remains closed. So essentially think of this endpoint. As you're approaching this endpoint, if you've got any actuarial gains or losses, the endpoint may go up or down. It could go from 32 million up to 35 million or 40 million, or it could go, go down and be only 20 million. Essentially because the, the way the amortization schedule is set up, it, the final payment is got to be made in, in that final year. Because at the end of the 24-year period, you're fully funding any unfunded liability essentially in, in one single year. Looking at the same concept of the funded policy, the funding policy from a, a funding ratio. At this point, we're, we're hoping and projecting that if all of, again, all of the actuarial assumptions are met and the town contributes 100% of the recommended contributions from, from this point forward, which is based on the, the state statute, that's the requirement because of the pension obligation bond. You'll start to see, we're at the point now where you're, you should start seeing, you know, a slow gradual increase in the funded percentage. So 38% up to 40%. And then essentially a pretty steep ramp up towards the end here as you approach the end of the emers station period. And again, that, that really ties into the, to this slide where you see a, a pretty steep increase in the contract and the required contributions. That's why you're seeing the, the funded percentage go up towards the end of the year. Extra contributions tied in with the fact that essentially benefit payments are eventually going to peak and then you'll start gaining more and more ground on your funded percentage. So just in summary, one of the key actuarial assumptions tied in these very simplistic projections is that assets return 7%. So to the extent that they return less than that, the town contribution will go up. To the extent that they return more than that and the actuarial smoothing method of the assets also remains above the 7%, then the, the town contributions could go down. Also, again, just, I can't say this enough, expect that the, the contribution requirements are going to gradually increase as a dollar amount, again, because of this 2% annual increase built into the amortization schedule. And then again, you know, it's hard to believe that we're six years, already six years into this, this funding plan with the 30-year amortization setup, but 24 years left remaining in the, in the amortization schedule. And you can see the other couple of bullet points I, I won't repeat here, just talking about the demographics. Decrease in the active population and then the, the eventual decrease in even the retiree population 30 years out. So very last bullet, again, just highlighting funding a pension plan is just essentially a balance of inflow and outflow. The main outflow being the benefit payments coming out of the pension plan currently around 28 million, but expected to, to peak at 41 million in about 16 years from now before starting to, to decline. So here's just a couple, a couple of caveats, some fine print, if you will. I would like to just wrap up my presentation on a somewhat positive note. Again, these were all numbers focused in on June 30th, 2020. And I thought it was important, I've done this for a few other towns that I've worked with. Obviously with the July 1, 2020 fiscal year end, that's where we have to measure the liabilities and the assets as far as coming up with the, the required contribution. But if we were to estimate the funded level of the plan as of December 31st, you can see, of course, the liability is up slightly. But more importantly, the, the market value of assets had a very strong fourth quarter of the calendar year, ending December 31 on a pretty high note. So you can see while you hadn't gained a lot of ground, the last couple of fiscal years with the, the funded percentage remaining around 35, 36%. You know, a silver lining here is that as of halfway through the fiscal year, it's a pretty good pickup of, of funded level up to 40%. Here's to hoping that the, the assets remain at this level or, or maybe even continue to climb a little bit between now and, and June 30, 2021. But I thought it was at least a, a positive note to, to show the town council that they're, you know, from a mid-year update standpoint, there, there's been some good progress on the funded level.
Thank you, Mr. Nearing. And just from, for some historical perspective, in 2010, that number was 10.25%.
Exactly. So it's, it's, it's come a long ways from, I remember early on talking about making sure the plan had enough money to pay its retirees in the next couple of years to, you know, 40%. That's, that's some pretty good progress. Like I said, hopefully this, this 40% holds on through the end of this fiscal year and, and maybe even improves a little bit.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nearing. And I'm going to ask a couple of questions myself and then open it up to some question and answer. Again, let's try to be mindful of each other's time and let's just go with 15 minutes. The first question that I, I just, for clarification, to make sure we're all on the same page. The town has met all its legal requirements in terms of funding this year?
Well, correct. I mean, as far as the current fiscal year, my understanding is that there's not a, you know, a, a mid-year state requirement. But essentially for the fiscal year that ended June 30th, 2020, the state requirement was met. And I believe based on a, a earlier board meeting, that was, it was announced that, you know, that the town is more or less on track year to date to, to meet the requirement for the current fiscal year.
Thank you. And we are, we're funded at 100% this year, right? The budgeted for 100%.
Correct.
And not to toot our own horns, but this is in the terms of the history of payment of Hampden, a historical first.
Yeah, I, I would have to take a, a, a look back pretty far probably to see, to confirm that to historical first, but for many decades, I, I think it is, yes.
Just, just flexing on behalf of my counsel here.
Yes. Now this, this, like I said, this is, you know, hopefully, you know, the, the presentation is trying to show that, that there has been certainly some progress made, especially through December 31st. That's kind of good news.
And I do look forward, I have no plans to be around on council by 2044. Remember us fondly. And just, this is, we're dealing with the cleaning up. Hopefully they'll appreciate what we've done. And okay, those, that's questions that I had, Mr. McDowell.
Thank you very much and appreciate you being here this evening, providing the presentation. Um, question about, and forgive me, perhaps I misunderstood. When I looked at your graph and the earnings over the years, it looked like this year was a dip. Can I, is it possible to display that again? So I can, I can clear, get clarification on, on what our earnings were in 2020? In terms of market return?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at the graph now and I'm not sure if I can.
If, even if you can't share, if you could just tell me in terms of percentage, what our 2020 market return was?
2020 market return was about 5.3% versus the prior year of 7.4%.
Right. So is that before or after our expenses? Is that the total market return or is that?
That's, my understanding, that's a, that's kind of a, a net return.
So that's after our expenses?
Yes.
Okay. Still 5% seems way below the market, especially looking at that graph. It seems like our dips are extraordinarily low compared to the market average. And it seems like our increases are not as strong as the market average. Particular throughout most of 2020, obviously we had a massive dip there in, 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 what was it, March? But every quarter thereafter, we were in, I mean, it was about as bull market as a, as a market can be, right? So, so for our return to be 5% seems like, you know, especially when you were looking at, if I'm not mistaken, there was a 15% dip in the year 2009. That was after a significant dip in 2008. Obviously we know what that's from, but those numbers seem extreme. It seems like our dips are, are, are not as good as the market average. So I'm wondering what we could be doing better there?
One thing I, I remember hearing, one of the, I think it's DayHAB that talks about for, you know, they're the investment advisor for the pension plan. And you got to be careful looking at your measurement period. So these are all on a, you know, a July to June measurement period. If you were to look at, and this goes back maybe a couple of years, and the investment advisor was saying, instead of looking at a, you know, a fiscal year basis, if you were to look at the returns on a calendar year basis, the returns would look significantly different. So I, I think the world is kind of used to talking in calendar years as far as the, the market returns. And that may be where you're seeing where there has been very good market returns, but because of the fiscal year measurement period, you may, you may be catching, you know, quarters three and four of a calendar year may have been great, but quarters, you know, one and two of the next fiscal year may have not been so great. So that kind of mutes the, the returns when you're looking at a, you know, a, a July through June fiscal year. Does it, does that make sense that it's, it's really around the timing of the, the measurement period?
It certainly does. It's difficult. I would say that it's difficult for us to compare our returns, you know, and, and granted, I understand that our fiscal year is July through June. However, if we're going to take a serious dive into, you know, an actuarial report, I, it would help if those align to the market and how the market assesses. Because otherwise it's difficult for us to assess whether or not we are seeing reasonable returns, right? And, and so that, that would be helpful. I don't know if that's something that can be provided at a later date. But you know, certainly it would be helpful to be able to compare to the market and see where we are in terms of whether we're exceeding or, or below what we should be able to expect in terms of the market average. I appreciate you diving into that with me. Certainly the calendar does make sense there. But hopefully at some point we'll be able to see something that is a better comparison there. The only other thing that I'll, I'll remark on as we, as we think about heading into budget season is that we are funding at 100% of our ARC because we are now legally required to. It is not the first time the council has decided to fund the ARC at 100%. We first decided to do that in 2018, 2019 annual budget. At which point the administration held bills until the end of the year and everything else was expended. And the only place we could take it was from our contribution to the ARC. So it is not the first time the council has decided to contribute 100%. I'm glad we're there. But as we head into our budget season, let's, let's keep in mind that our, our financial decisions need to be responsible and not because they're legally required. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. McDowell.
If I can, for one second, just for some historical perspective, the corpus of the retirement fund was so low in nine, 10, in that area, you know, plus or minus 55,000 or $55 million that we were kind of forced onto the bond side. And so that kind of necessarily shielded us from the vagaries of the equity side of the market. So that has to be kind of factored into an analysis going back to, you know, let's say, let's say 2000. We were, we were just, we were in a, in a bond heavy position.
Forgive me, but what, at what point in time?
Name of order. We have 15 minutes to ask Mr. Nearing questions and I don't think it's appropriate.
As a, I was actually just going to speak to that, Ms. Horstley. As we are, we're down to eight minutes. I'm sorry, Dr. Horstley. We're down to eight minutes. So with the councils, with no objection, we'll extend this because, you know, we've only gotten through two of us so far. So extend that out. But Mr. McDowell, perhaps this is a conversation you could have with Mr. Jackson offline. We want to ask questions of Mr. Nearing while we have.
That's okay. Quick two-second follow-up on that since it's part of the conversation. At what point in time did the pension obligation bond get put into the fund? Like at what point did that enter the fund? Or if we don't know that, that's fine. I'll find it out later.
2015?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDowell. Mr. Farmer?
Thank you, Council President. I guess I have a couple of questions. At the end of your side, Mr. Nearing. It had us, our, our contribution being something like 41 million? And, right, correct, okay. That's basically twice where we are now. And from my understanding in your presentation, you said there was three ways that we contribute to the fund. One is through the employees, other is through the contribution through the town, the third is through investments. Correct?
Just to clarify, the, the 41 million is benefit payments coming out of the plan?
41 million is coming out of the plan?
That, that's the peak coming out of the plan and the, the projected contribution goes up to about 32 million.
Okay. So I, I guess my question to you and to expand on Council McDowell's questions, what, what are we doing in terms of investments to see a growth over the contribution? Because I don't think that we're going to, we haven't been great at negotiating to get more of a contribution into the fund. The town, we are taxed out, we have a billion in liabilities. So I guess my question is, what can we do in terms of investments?
As the actuary for the plan, I, I can comment on the investment strategy. But I will say to, just to kind of add on to Mr. Jackson's prior comments, I think it's important to note, I was kind of highlighting during my presentation, the fact that this year in particular, the, the, the net cash flow in and out of the plan was essentially zero. Prior to this year, there was essentially more money coming out of the plan than flowing into the plan. So part of the reason that the, the investment return, the market return was not as good is that unfortunately, when contributions aren't enough to cover the benefit payments coming out of the plan, you may end up having to sell your equity position at an inopportune moment to cover benefit payments, to cover the cash that needs to cover the benefit payments coming out of the plan. So that's something that, that needs to, you know, be considered at this point, you know, hopefully like I, like I showed in the graphs, that the funded percentage should slowly start to hopefully turn the corner and improve. And then part of that, you know, positive snowballing effect as, as the, the corpus of the assets continues to grow, you'll have more and more money available to earn hopefully more and more investment income.
Cool. I, just before, pass it to the next council person, for historical context, the last three years, we've done two debt restructurings. So this budget is going to be really important on setting us up for the right course of action.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer and Ms. Dr. Horstley.
Thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Nearing. So I, I'm curious how closely your firm works with DayHAB, the investment firm. Do you guys communicate or is that just a separate relationship?
No, we, we definitely communicate where, you know, prior to the pandemic, I, I would always chat with them before or after the meetings. One thing in particular that both the actuary and investment advisors have to kind of agree on and collaborate on is the expected return on assets, which is used to, to essentially measure the liability, the 7% that we're currently assuming. That's always kind of a, an annual discussion that I have with them. And I'm glad And uh, I'm glad you asked that question. That that does remind me that um, I'm not sure how much everybody's heard, even though the economy had a really great twenty-twenty. Um, a lot of the investment people and advisors that I've heard is that don't expect such great returns going forward. So um, that's something that we're going to have to work with, with Day Hub and in the upcoming measurement, June thirtieth, the twenty-twenty-one, to see what we use for the expected return and it may be possibly lower than that. Um, which would increase the the required contribution. Because if you expect less in investment income coming into the plan, then the contribution as the only other inflow into the plan um, has to go up.
Thank you for clarifying that. Um, and do you, so have you managed other um, funds that have given payouts to payout employees for for their pensions as a way to reduce future costs?
So are you talking about essentially like a one-time um, cash out, if you will, of a a retiree's future payments?
Yes.
I have worked on that on um, uh, corporate plans, but not directly on any public sector plans. I've I've heard that strategy considered. Um, it's an interesting strategy, but but right now, uh, given the low interest rate environment, that that could be pretty costly to the, to the town.
Great. Um, and then my final question is for perhaps Mr. McGary or Mr. Jackson. Is it appropriate for the Legislative Council to activate the actuarial assessment that has not been performed? Or is there a plan to do that in the very near future? That Mr. Nearing is recommending?
The experience study?
Yes. Thank you.
That's a good question. Uh, will you, do we release a dove or something like, how does that work, Mr. Nearing? And like, we do it or how's that?
What, um, I think essentially it would just need to be approved by Town Council or or, you know, uh, potentially the the Pension Board to es- essentially hire us and authorize us to move forward with that uh, experience study.
Um, so I will mention to my colleagues that the Fiscal Stability Committee meets tomorrow. And this month, we will be focusing on pensions with some expert um, folks in the state coming in next uh, in two weeks. Um, but I do have a preliminary report that we will be discussing tomorrow, um, based on this and the history of our fund. So thank you so much.
Dr. Horstley and Ms. Bonnies.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nearing, for being here and for remembering my question from a few years ago. That was me. Um, so my question, it, you mentioned, um, the CPI uh, was greater than two-point-two-five. What was the CPI? Could, do you know that number offhand?
Um, I'm not sure if I I do not have it readily available, what the actual was for.
It's CPIU minus the utility bucket.
So I mean, I I'm I'm just curious about the number, the two-point-two-five, because um, we have, we have, uh, is my understanding that we have a one-point-seven-five cap? Um, oh, that's on the COLA, but that, so that's what I was wondering, if it was above the one-point-seven-five or is it? When you, when you mentioned the two-point-two-five, was that, what was that a measurement? What was that benchmark that you're referring to?
Yeah, the, uh, unfortunately, the the COLA has been a little uh, confusing lately since the the one-point-seven-five maximum
Mm-hmm.
really only applies to, uh, you know, the newer retirees that are going into the population. Most of the retirees currently receiving payments are at the original three percent maximum. So you've got kind of retirees, some at a three percent, they can get up to three percent, and some uh, that could get up to one-point-seven-five. The the two-point-two-five percent is uh, our actuarial assumption kind of in in aggregate, what the uh, the retiree payments will, will go up. And I believe the, essentially the average between most people, again, most of the population in the, in the higher three percent max, um, must have been maybe around two-point-four, two-point-five percent.
Got it. Okay, thank you. That clarifies that question. And then, um, you did say at the, at twenty forty-four, the assumption is that we're going to be a hundred percent funded. Um, but in one of your graphs, um, at the year twenty forty-four, we were around ninety-some-odd percent funded. So what, what's the option at year twenty forty-four, the end of our closed emergerization period? You um, referred to something maybe um, that if we kept it closed, but if we, is there an option to open it and and um, you know, smooth out that last final year if we're only at ninety percent in twenty forty-four, at the end of our thirty years? Um, what are the options? Because that, if we're only at ninety percent funded, uh, we're going to have a a big chunk of change to pay off in that final year.
Yeah, yeah, I think that the chart is just, um, that might be, and the two years before might be at the ninety percent, and there's just not enough room on the graph to squeeze in the, you know, the ninety to maybe ninety-five to a hundred percent. But the the graph did go in, in year twenty forty-four, it does um, hit the hundred percent. But my comment was it, um, I, we worked with another town that did um, work with the state and kind of readjust the emergerization period, the required contribution, um, and and kind of a, a, you know, a debt restructuring in such a way to smooth this out if things got too difficult for the town. I'd, um, it, it's essentially the 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 twenty-four-year period. I mean, it is what it is right now. Um, but a lot obviously can change in twenty-four years, so I I don't want to say for sure that, you know, the town of Hamden is a hundred percent stuck with this schedule for the entire twenty-four years. So, Mr. Jackson, I don't, I don't know if you have any comments related to that, knowing that you were in, involved with the the pension obligation bond setup?
Uh, no, you, that's accurate. That's all I can say.
Okay. Thank you. I'm all set. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Bonnies. Uh, we are at ten minutes left. Mr. Farmer.
Cool. Thank you, uh, Council President. I just had a question of clarification. So this process, listener, that you spoke of, is this a five-year recap? Or is this a five-year planning into the future? Like, what will we all be doing if we approve such a study?
Oh, for the experience study. So that the experience study essentially looks at at least five years of actual experience for the plan and compares them to the actuarial assumptions. So for example, um, this
Going forward or backwards?
Well, it, it, that's a good question. So it it looks at the experience backwards to compare it with our assumptions. And then we adjust our assumptions accordingly and apply them going forward for for future calculations.
Going forward, projecting the next five years or?
Uh, for, for all future years.
Okay.
Correct, correct. So a a simplistic version would be, let's say that, you know, we saw in this past year, um, more guardians retired than expected. If that looks like that is the correct assumption to use, we would make that assumption for all future years as well.
Cool. I I appreciate that. Um, um, former Majority Leader, uh, O'Brien uh, did a lot of uh, evaluation. So I'd be interested in to move forward with those projections. Uh, the only question, uh, thank you for coming here tonight and joining us. Uh, the only other question I have, uh, through you, to you, Council President, um, when, if we go down this road, uh, can we figure out what the projected cost would be ahead of time? Because I think especially with all the different types of assessments that we could be doing, I think we should make a plan of action of expenses to do these studies rather than just piecemeal them one by one. We can really sit as a council and think about what is the best bang for our buck. Um, I'm sure, Mr. Nearing, you would do a great job, but just all the different facets we have to consider. I think it'd be pertinent that we figure out what forensic uh, uh, studies that we're going to be doing and what the estimate cost is going to be. Um, so when that time comes, if we can put that together, or through you, uh, Councilwoman uh, Horstley, as I know you're doing the uh, this uh, budget process. So e- either one of you, um, when we get to that point, if y'all could bring those bills to us before we proceed, I think. Sounds good?
Yeah, I can, I can say that, um, if you're concerned about changing the assumption and how that impacts the contribution going forward, is that kind of your, your question? You'd like to see that in advance?
Uh, I, I was saying more so in the sense of cost of of, if we are going to hire a firm to do that, there's a multitude of different studies that we need to do to figure out where we're going for. So I'd like to aggregate what the cost of studies we're going to do and figure out how much money we're going to put aside so that when we get to the budget, that we don't just go like, oh, no, we did a hundred thousand dollars in studies and now we have to cut somewhere from the budget. I'd prefer for us to be thinking this holistically so that we know what that target cost is so that we can crunch whatever numbers we can so that we can get better data the following budget.
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Farmer, and
Makes sense?
Yeah, I, we just want to know how much it costs before we go jumping in there.
Okay, cool. I just want to make sure the message is received.
Agreed. Um, other questions for Mr. Nearing? Okay, seeing none with five minutes remaining. Well, thank you very much for your time, Mr. Nearing, and uh, we'll talk to you again. Did he already go?
Uh, it seems like he may have, uh, dropped off.
Okay.
There was a notice that he left the meeting.
Speaking to the void, thank you for your time, Mr. Nearing. Um, the ends are reports of departments. Um, we, we have no consiliations at this time. Uh, approval of previous minutes. Uh, they have a motion to approve the minutes of one nineteen, twenty-twenty-one. That was the special meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Horstley. Uh, sounds like Ms. Wetmore got in their second discussion. Given a call for the vote, all favor of approving the minutes uh, for the one nineteen special meeting, please indicate by saying or showing aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Uh, the minutes are approved. Uh, a motion to approve the minutes of the one nineteen, twenty-twenty-one regular meeting.
Oh, moved.
Moved by Mr. Farmer.
Second.
Second by Ms. Horstley. Discussion. Missing out, I'll call for the vote. All favor, please indicate by saying or showing aye.
Aye.
Both abstentions. Uh, the minutes are approved. We do not have a consent calendar. We'll move on to our regular agenda. Uh, working on our agenda this evening requires a two-thirds vote with members present in voting for suspension of the rules. Uh, may I have a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Back it.
Second by Ms. Wetmore. Discussion. Um, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Farmer.
Council President, you were about to, were you going to call the vote or were you going to say something?
Going to say, uh, you know, we are moving uh, steadily along in terms of our move towards uh, civics clerk and changing our schedule. Uh, between now and the next meeting, we'll send around uh, some uh, revisions to the rules. Uh, we're doing work in the Rules Committee, um, to think about our, uh, you know, we, we're to speak about how we work with each other, but also our schedule and the changes that will be necessary to our standing rules to work that way. And the plan is that we will move to committees on separate nights. And, you know, we, if all goes according to plan, and hopefully it does, we will have a Legislative Council meeting on the sixteenth of February. Oh, Mr. Nearing is back. Hello, Mr. Nearing.
Sorry about that. I I guess a snow squall came through and knocked out my uh, internet.
Uh, well, that's quite all right. We were just, thank you for your time, uh, and and the work. Any other questions, uh, the last moment for Mr. Nearing?
Please, Travis.
Uh, so be safe, Mr. Nearing, and thank you very much for your time this evening.
You're welcome. Everybody have a good night. Stay safe.
Thank you. You as well. Um, so the council meeting with under sort of this operation procedure, the last one would be the sixteenth. Uh, we'll have a practice run with civics clerk. Um, you know, a mock meeting on the twenty-second, another mock meeting on the first um, of March, and then we'll begin, uh, I'm sorry, the, yeah, then we'll begin our committees and then our council meeting. So um, updates coming. But I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Farmer.
No, I, uh, I think you said everything, so we will wait and we will see.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Um, further comments? All favor suspending the rules, please indicate by showing, I'm sorry, Mr. McDowell?
Yeah, dude, you said there would be a mock meeting on the first as well? Would that be before our regular meeting or, oh, sorry, I'm, I'm looking at this month. Today is Yeah, move. Oh, no, 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 no. March, March first is a Monday as well. So would that be before our regular scheduled meeting or would it be in place of?
In place of. We would have committee meetings on the fifteenth to twenty-second, then the full council meeting on the twenty-nine.
So, okay, so we'll only have one council meeting in March?
Yep, and that'll be the uh, the model moving forward.
Okay, all right.
Essentially, the concept is to have three meetings a month, uh, committees, committees, council.
Okay. Oh, okay. All right. That makes more sense. Thank you.
All favor suspending the rules, please indicate by saying or showing aye. Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstentions to an opposition, Ms. Renta? At the meetings, uh, the rules have been suspended. Uh, we'll move on to our regular agenda. Um, would anyone like to consider?
Oh, well, to bundle one through six appointments or reappointments.
Second.
Uh, the motion is to bundle one through six. Discussion. All favor, uh, Mr. Farmer?
I would like to take this opportunity to thank everybody for their service and dedication to the town in the spirit of former councilmen, and so thank y'all. It is deeply appreciated.
Indeed. Uh, all favor bundling one through six, please indicate by saying or showing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Uh, items one through six have been bundled. We have a motion to approve items one through six as bundled.
Someone's up for it.
Second.
Uh, we'll say Ms. Baez approved, and Ms. Bonnies uh, got the second on that. Discussion. Ms. Baez is the maker of the motion. Would you like to speak to it?
No, thank you, everyone.
I will say I concur with Mr. Uh, Farmer and Ms. Baez. All favor of approving items one through six, please indicate by saying or showing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Items one through six as bundled have been approved. Uh, item number seven, in order authorizing intra-departmental transfer, twenty twenty, twenty-two in fiscal year budget, fifty thousand dollars, LC legal lawyer. Uh, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Bonnies, second by Mr. Farmer. Uh, just an explanatory note, um, a lot of work is being done, um, our Charter Review Commission. And we are in quite a few legal fees. We are in quite a few legal fees. Uh, I had, do, you know, ask our folks to try to. Um, obviously, a lot of great work's being done, a lot of good research, uh, you know, the, the joint meetings that are being held, lots of good stuff happening. However, I'm asking, you know, let's try to keep this um as uh. As low as we can. It's, it's charter requirement, we must do it. I think a lot of great research is being done. Uh, but it does cost. Uh, Ms. Bonnades is the maker of the motion. You, you would like to speak to it?
Yes, thank you, I would. Um, I would like to see a itemized bill from um Attorney Mednick. I'd like to know how many hours. Um, I'd like to know, you know, what this fifty thousand dollars um is covering. And also, um, as you mentioned, to try to keep that bill, you know, lower, a- as low as possible. Uh, I'd like to know um as a forecast, what we can be expected to pay for those services rendered. As being um guiding uh our Charter Review Commission. Do we have a maximum? You know, we, we need to, we need to be able to um. Uh, predict what our payments and costs are going to be for this Charter Review Commission.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Bonnades. So I'd say the itemized bill, I think, Ms. Renta, we've been receiving them and sending them around.
Every single month.
Um, or do we have them collected in any, any spot?
Um. I don't know, but I can do that tomorrow. I could put them all for this fiscal year in one continuous document.
Yeah, if you could do that, just so we have them all in one place for, for use of. And Ms. Bonnades, the, the amount we kind of came to was indeed kind of a forecast of looking back. I am kind of hopeful that as the document reaches its conclusion, hopefully there might be a little less to do, but there will be drafts. Obviously, to be done once the document comes before us and other bodies and changes get made, but um, uh, it is a pricey process. Uh, anything else, Ms. Bonnades?
I, I didn't, did you give out a, um, an amount that was forecasted? I didn't, you, your voice kind of went out a little bit.
Oh, uh, yeah, we just looked towards the past and tried to see how much we could um would be necessary. This is, I would say, you know, it's an estimate uh based upon what's happened in the past months, and we just sort of said, okay, this is what it has been costing. Let's see what gets us to July, and that's where the number was forecast.
And can you please provide that number?
Well, fifty thousand was kind of an estimate.
Okay, I, I'm thinking for the entire process.
I can ask Mr. Mennick to prepare something like that, but that'll cost more money.
Of course, it will.
I'll, I'll ask Mr. Mennick to give us an, an idea of uh, you know, what our costs are moving forward. You know, we all know it's, it's a charter requirement, and it is, and some of the things I think that are being considered are pretty interesting. Um, and, you know, lots of great research, but those costs.
Okay, I would appreciate that. I just think we need to know to be able to predict what this expense is going to be. Um, when we're taking money out of our emergency contingency fund to pay it, um, we need to know what to expect. So I would appreciate that forecast. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Farmer?
Thank you, Council President. Um, to Councilwoman uh Bonnades' point, uh, I, I would hope that we can encourage the administration. To move forward with this being a practice, uh, where they put, you know, the billable hours and what they're for. When they send documentation in general for all the legal services, I think that'd be beneficial to us as the fiscal authorities. Um, and it would just help with the amount of emails and other paperwork we gotta go through if we can have more concise uh documentation. Um, the second thing, I, I wanted to ask Attorney Gruin for a point of clarification. Um, we have Mr. Jackson on the documentation as finance director. Uh, we have not taken that vote, so legally, if we make this vote, will everything be all right transactionally or? Could that be a problem?
I'm confused. Is the vote to uh transfer funds to your, for your lawyer?
Yeah, but on the backup documentation, it says, uh, Director Jackson. So I wanted to get clarification from you if that was okay, or are we gonna have to revisit it?
I think the communication you have is a memo. I think what you're voting on, although I did not prepare it, is an order. The document you're voting on is an order. Um, that would be signed by, uh, if you look at the bottom, me, the mayor. Um, the council president.
So we, we don't have to worry about anything.
I don't think that you're voting on anything with Mr. Jackson's name on it. I could be wrong. I, again, I didn't prepare that document.
The memo hasn't, but I wanted.
I, I understand you're, Mr. uh, Council, uh, Councilman, you're voting on water, nothing with Mr. Jackson's name on it, as far as I know.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer, Dr. Horsley.
How much did it cost um five, is it five or ten years ago, uh, when the charter was revised? What was the cost at that time?
Ms. Renta, do you remember? I, before my time, I.
I do not remember without looking that up.
Well, I, I guess I would like to know um in comparison with last time, what the costs were. I think it's fine to think about what has been expended, but this should be compared to past practice rather than what's currently happening.
Uh, good point. I would also, you know, point out that this transfer doesn't mean, the expectation is not to use all of this money. Hopefully, this is, you know, gets us through the process. Um, and hopefully doesn't cost all this money.
Thank you.
Right. And Mr. Uh.
I just had a follow-up.
Mr. Farmer?
Quick point. Thank you, Council President. I, I just wanted to, well, like before, I said, we should probably do assessment. Again, agreeing with Councilwoman Bonnades about these expenses so that we can figure it out, so that we don't have the shock in our moments. But I, I do also want to say that this is a once in a decade uh opportunity to update uh our proceedings in town. And we didn't, a decade ago, we did not talk about systemic racism. A decade ago, we did not talk about. Uh, some of the issues and things that this particular charter committee is uh balancing and working on. So I just want to make sure that as we talk about costs that we're cognizant, that this is a major overhaul. Uh, in terms of conversation in this charter revision compared to others. So. Thank you for uh letting me add that to the Council President.
Mr. Farmer, Mr. Caesar?
Thank you. Uh, it's my hope that this is not also carte blanche for the um attorneys and for the commissioners. Think they can spend whatever they want to spend on this. I mean, I would like to have seen a number like up to or not to exceed. Whatever the amount of money is. I mean, this is not a carte blanche situation where we can spend. The amount of money they want to spend, so I, I'd hope that maybe we can rein this in a little bit eventually and sort of get it under control. Because this can't be a hundred thousand dollar deal here, two hundred thousand dollar deal. We have to get it under control and make sure that it doesn't exceed a certain. As well, our, our, our money's tight, so I'm just saying that, that I hope that we can find a way to, you know, send a clear message. This is not carte blanche.
Mr. Caesar, Ms. Ruin.
Hi, uh, thank you. Um, I, I just wanted to follow up with Mr. Farmer. Um, uh, Deputy Finance Director uh Galarza informed me that he in fact signed the tr- the actual transfer paper.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Hope that helps.
Uh, thank you. Um, further discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor of item number seven, please indicate by saying or showing eye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Item passes? Uh, item eight, I'm wondering if there might be a motion to bundle. Mr. McDowell, is that where you were headed?
No, but I'll go ahead and do that. A motion to, uh. Act on items eight and nine together.
Okay.
All right, so the motion is to bundle together items eight and nine. Uh, moved by Mr. McDowell, second by Mr. Farmer. Discussion. You're separating out the middle school, Mr. McDowell?
I'm sorry?
Item ten, you're separating out item ten?
I, it's a different, it's, it's a different vendor, which is why I kept them separate, but that's. I, I'm not opposed to combining them, but if anybody wants to make that motion, but different vendors, I, I thought those might, anyway. Uh, did anybody want to combine those or? Cool. Sorry, I'm, I have the floor, right?
Yes.
Cool.
Uh, luckily, we've had the motion in the second, so yeah, as a maker of the motion, would you like to speak to it?
Oh, I'm sorry. This is the motion to combine. I'll wait.
This is the bundling, yeah.
I'll wait to speak until, sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion on the bundling? All in favor, please indicate by saying or showing eye.
Eye.
Opposed? I want an opposition. Uh, eight and nine have been bundled. Uh, may I have a motion to approve items eight and nine as combined?
So moved.
Okay.
Mr. McDowell, second by Mr. Farmer. Uh, Mr. McDowell is the maker of the motion. Would you like to speak to it?
Yeah, um, M- Mrs. Smith, if, if you don't mind discussing with us a little bit about the procurement process. Um, you know, we've used Silver Petroselli various times for a while. Um, uh, just wondering if you could discuss with us a little bit about the procurement process, why we decided to go with these vendors. And I know in the past, we've had some concerns about deadlines not being met and budgets not being met. So if we could, if we could just hear from you a little bit about why we're continuing to go with Silver Petroselli, I think that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Absolutely. Um, so, uh, as you asked about the procurement process, uh, because these are state projects. Um, we are required to do an RFQ, so Request for Qualifications, followed by a request for proposals. Um, so, and this, I, I realize we're just talking about, are we just talking about the, the two roof projects right now? Okay.
Westwoods, yeah, and.
Okay. Um, so this, this will, but this does, just for clarification, this also applies to the uh, the other contract that's on the agenda as well. Um, so we, as I said, we went out for an RFQ, um, received a, a number of proposals. Or, I'm sorry, a number of submissions. It's then narrowed down to no fewer than four. Um, vendors and who are then asked for a proposal for the projects. Um, and we got those. They were interviewed by a panel of folks selected from the school building committee. And um, I see we have a visitor. Um, and um. Silver Petroselli was um not only uh chosen by the panel as the best vendor. But once the price proposals were opened, they were also by far the lowest bidder. Um, so that is, that's how we um, that's how we came by them.
How, how much lower would you say? I mean, you said by far, so I guess how much lower were they than the next closest bidder?
Half.
Okay, so we got a lot of room there uh in terms of budget. Um, I, of course, I'm gonna encourage that we are mindful of the budget and the deadlines as we move forward. And hopefully, if there's any indication that we won't be meeting our, you know, uh, intended budget or, or deadlines, you know. Uh, hopefully, that will come to the council sooner in an update rather than when we might have to vote on that kind of transfer. Um, with that said, you know, uh, this will fix the water intrusion issues that we've been having at the school, correct?
Correct.
Cool. And that's something that I know a lot of us have been advocating for, for a number of years. Um, I'm excited to see that that's finally getting fixed, and I appreciate your hard work on that. And uh, excited to move forward. Thank you.
Likewise.
All right, thank you, Mr. McDowell. Further discussion, Mr. Farmer?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Ms. Smith, uh, for waiting out with us and joining us. Um, you, you said it was half. Are, are you seeing for both projects or both of the projects combined? In terms of the bid?
So the way that the um, the price proposals were given was vendors could vote, could um do proposals for each project. Um, or they could do a proposal for the two together. And if I'm not mistaken, and I will double check this, but if I'm not mistaken, they're. Um, they're over, their lump sum price was half what the next lowest vendor was.
Okay. Uh, thank you for that clarification. Um, uh, I, I wanna stress, like, part of the concerns, you know, we've. You, you Silver Petroselli, uh, on a couple of different projects, uh, and these have been concerns over the years. I guess m- my only other question is, um, i- in terms of these roofs uh replacement. Uh, in terms of the designs that they're making, how long are these roofs supposed to uh be weatherized for? Like, how long are they going to projectively ideally uh be built for?
I believe they have to meet uh at least a twenty year um standard. Uh, but I, they're usually twenty to twenty-five years. Um, I can, I can get you the exact answer, but. The reason they're, they're considered for the non-priority list at the state is because they are older than twenty years. Um, so they would be, I, I can double check on um what they're being designed for, the, the lives, what the expected lifespan of them is, if you will.
Uh, a- and I guess the next question is, in terms of a warranty, um, I doubt, hope maybe. I, I doubt that most of us or any of us will be here uh twenty years to follow up. So I, I, I guess that question of, you know, if and when will those conversations come along about guaranteeing? Make sure that we, as the town, follow up of contractors don't fulfill their obligations.
And what, what, I'm just.
I, I guess the question was, I guess the question was, wh- what contractual guarantee do we have that? Like, if the roof starts leaking in year four, what recourse do we have as a town? Uh, and how will we make sure to follow up with that process if that happens?
Um, so usually there are um within, you know, any contractor doing work, there is a certain guarantee of uh or warranty, if you will. Um, and that's usually overseen by whoever is in charge of operations, so that would be John Cross for the Board of Ed. Um, so, you know, say something goes wrong in year two, he has all the documentation. Once they're done with the project, they get handed, you know, the book that has all the different warranties of, you know, you get five years for this, ten years for that. Um, I'm speaking hypothetically. Um, and so, as you suggested, if something goes wrong in year four. Then it would be Mr. Cross who's got that book right there in front of him and knows who to call.
Well, I, I just wanted to say, as there have been times where I feel we haven't been as aggressive to make sure to follow up. Of contractors when we don't necessarily agree with the craftsmanship of their work. So I want to make sure that we do that moving forward. Uh, the only other thing I'd like to say, uh, thank uh the school building committee yourself. Uh, especially Councilman McDowell, as he's advocated on this for some time as well. So, thank you for joining us. Thank you for answering my question.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. The issue maker.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, Ms. Smith, I'm assuming that all new roof installations are um. Uh, geared toward being receptive to solar installations, uh, should that be deemed uh. Uh, feasible for the site? Could you clarify that for me? Uh, I think that's standard practice now, but I'm not sure.
I believe that is standard practice from um the school, the Office of School Construction Grants is, um, they are very amenable to that. They are very amenable to that. Um, with these particular projects, um. I, I know the board has tossed that idea around. I don't know where they planted it.
So the point is just, should it be feasible for those rooftops, the, the roofing project should be, um, up to that? Is, is the question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Miss Shoemaker. Further discussion on items eight and nine as combined. Uh, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying or showing eye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstentions? Item passes with one in opposition. Uh, item ten is in order to approve agreement between the town of Handon and Downs Construction for pre-construction and construction management service. Handon Middle School. May I have a motion, Ms. Byes?
I'll second that, please.
Seconded by Miss Shoemaker. Uh, Ms. Smith, you want to kind of run us through this and then, um, we can ask some questions?
Sure. It's gonna be like deja vu all over again. Um, so we, we. Went through the, uh, pretty much the exact same process that I just described, um, for the construction manager at risk. And, uh, similarly, uh, it was narrowed down. We went out, request for proposals. Narrowed down to four. To four vendors. Again, there was a, um, panel of interviewees. From the, uh, school building committee and, um. Downs Construction was, uh, once again was deemed the most qualified. And once the, um. Price proposals were opened, it also turned out they were the lowest bidder.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Byes, you're the maker of the motion. Would you like to speak to it?
Yes, um, I just want to say that tonight I am happily. Voting for Downs to be doing this CM at-risk contract with Handon Middle School. Um, not only were they the cheapest, but they were more importantly. Understood the requirements that I've been speaking about in the past few meetings, which is that we have CHRO requirements. To have the appropriate amount of minority as well as women-owned businesses on our job sites. I want to make sure that whoever's in charge of that understands that responsibility and takes it very seriously. Downs has a history of taking those seriously and has promised us as an organization. Um, that they not only have this as something that they can do historically. But it's something they're really familiar with and have relationships with small and minority businesses throughout the state. Um, they also have said that they most likely will exceed our percentages, which is what I'm looking for, seeing since they are fairly low. I believe in the school building committee to not only hold them to their promise of. Meeting our enterprise, our small minority and women-owned business enterprise requirements. But is also the workforce, minority workforce requirements. Female workforce requirements. And I know that our building committee can do that together, hold them to that promise. So I'm very happy to vote yes on Downs. And not only that, they've also talked about. Their promise to the economic development, um, and, uh. And investing in the community here in, in Handon. So they've mentioned working in other cities where they encourage their, their workforce and their folks on their job site to eat. And, um, purchase and stay in Handon and be able to put some dollars towards our local businesses, which is al- always welcome. And then besides that, they also have, um, said that they are willing to make an investment and our students here in Handon. By doing, uh, job shouting programs as well as exposure programs to our younger students. So that they understand the different, uh, jobs here in construction. And I want to emphasize not just. Um, the vocational jobs that we need to go back to plumbing, electrical. Sheet metal, roofing, ironwork. But as well as those things that might not be as accessible to our low-income students like construction management itself. So not only do we have our hands-on positions there, but they're also managerial. And safety positions and things that are in the back office that do need to be taught to our students. And given to those students who might not have access to that information. So I'm happy to hear that Downs have offered to teach our students, have a, a thumb in our community. And understand what Handon needs and that, that is some development, not just a building, but a, what we need for our citizens, our residents here. Um, and then on a lighter note, they also offered to do a, a art project with their students. Where they're putting up, um, where they offer to take drawings from our, from our kids and put it up on their temporary fencing that goes around construction projects. And you know, we're all for some beautification, even if it's just temporary. So that is why I'm happy as a, as a council member and also as a school building committee member. To be voting yes on Downs taking over this construction management, um, contract and making, and I, I'm here. As a council person and as a SBC member to say, we will hold them to their promises that they made a, made to us as a town. And make sure going forward that we don't have any, the problems that we've seen in the past. Right? And I, I trust that we, um, will make them responsible for, for what would need to be done here. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Byes. Well said. Uh, Ms. Webmore.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, I'll be voting against this and it has nothing to do with Downs. I have been against this whole project from the beginning because I feel personally that Handon cannot afford this. But, um, I will be voting against this as I have all the other things. I know it's been a scaled-down project, which I appreciate. But still, I, I just, I'm gonna vote against it because we cannot afford it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Webmore. Dr. Horsley.
Um, I just want to say thank you to Ms. Um, Smith and the school board comit- um, committee. As well as the, the Board of Education, um, for being very quick. With getting these contracts, the previous motion and this one, um, and making sure that we can equalize. Um, our school system in terms of, um, minority students throughout our district. So I just want to say thank you. And I will be supporting this.
Thank you, Dr. Horsley. Ms. Shoemaker.
Uh, thank you. I want to heartily concur with Ms. Byes and Dr. Horsley. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Shoemaker. Mr. Caesar.
Thank you. I'll be supporting this tonight. I think it's the right thing to do. I think it'll eventually lead to a possible universal pre-K. Which is a great thing for the town in terms of opportunities for our students and parents. I think it's just a, uh, much needed addition here in terms of, uh, reconfiguring the way our schools operate. I'll be supporting it tonight. I think, like I said, it's the right thing to do and I look forward to seeing it into fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caesar. Ms. Klaus.
I'm just gonna restate what everybody just said and I think this is a great idea and I'm, I'll say a yes tonight.
More concurrence. That's nice. Uh, Mr. Farmer.
Uh, thank you, Council President. I, I first want to say, uh, I, I appreciate, especially Councilwoman. Byes's, uh, advocacy and leadership on this issue, uh, uh, as well as setting a precedent. Uh, I have concerns about the middle school project, uh, but I'm going to put that aside because I'm sure that. Uh, through Ms. Byes's leadership as well as with Smith and others, that this will be a template. Of how we will start doing business in the town of Handon. Um, so I will be supporting this and I, I know that we can, uh, hold this together. I also think it's pertinent that as we go through this process. That we are being cognizant of the shuffle around of the schools. And that, you know, we on the council side also will be brought into that conversation to help in any way that we can. So that we can alleviate some of those tensions, uh, once construction starts. So. Once again, thank you for the leadership, uh, Councilman Byes. Thank y'all for putting this together and I look forward. To this partnership. I will be voting in favor of this.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Mr. Webber.
I too am in agreement, um, with, uh, all of them who have agreed. I too will be voting, uh, affirmative and, uh, great job, uh, Councilwoman Byes.
Thank you, Mr. Webber. Mr. McDowell.
Thank you. Um, I, I first want to thank, uh, Councilmember Byes's, uh. Byes for her hard work on this. Um, I, there's, I will be supporting this, this evening. Um, given that. Councilman Gagliardi, um. Is not here with us this evening and that there is no second district council member yet. Um. I, I, we all, I, I, I won't speak for him. I think we were here. We all know what Councilman Gagliardi's concerns were. Uh, on this project. And, uh, since, since, uh, he or another second district council member is not here to voice those concerns. I just want to articulate that I hope that those concerns will be thought about and honored. Out of respect for Councilmember Gagliardi and for the second district, um, which we know has representation incoming. Um, that said, I, I fully trust, um, I think the school building committee has done an extraordinary job on this. Uh, Council, Councilwoman Byes, I think your leadership on this has been extraordinary and I appreciate it. Um, and I, I will be wholeheartedly supporting this, uh, this evening. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. McDowell. Um. And I will just concur, especially I would like to go back to touch upon the universal pre-K plan or. Say universal access to pre-K, real game changer when it comes to, um, you know, us providing services for folks. So, um, very, very eager to see that move forward. Um, and I concur with everyone's, uh. Uh, thoughts about Ms. Byes as well. Um. Further discussion or questions? Hey, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying or showing eye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye. I oppose.
Abstentions? Uh, motion passes with one in opposition. Uh, and actually, um. I appreciate the reminder, Ms. McDowell. We do have, uh, we have been, a name has been communicated to us. Uh, that the second district DTC has, um, nominated to go to the full DTC. Uh, so we will have, um, that will be, I assume voted on by the DTC next week or. Week after and then we will, uh, then we will have that name and act on. So that's the, on the sixteenth if all goes well. Um, so coming soon, we hope. Um, and we have reached the end of our agenda. Uh, Mr. Farmer, do you have something quick?
Yeah, uh, just a point of clarification on that. You said a name. So did multiple names come in or just one name?
No, the second district, I'm sorry, I have to, uh. Um. You know, it was in the paper too. You think I would remember? Just a moment. Sorry, Mr. Um, Farmer, one second. Mr., uh, Jaren Alston, a seven-year Handon resident, uh, has been, um. Selected by the second district, um. DTC and I assume Mr. Grace will move that on to be approved by the full, uh, DTC. But as of yet, we've only had the one name placed in consideration. Ms. Renter, have we gotten any letters of interest from anyone in the community?
We have not.
Okay, I. No, no, no. I, I just, you know, we, we announced it. I know the last time there was opening, there was a lot of, uh. Uh, interest, so, um. I'm surprised that only one person, but, uh, we'll, we'll see as the process goes along, um, so.
Little, little surprised myself, but so far this is what's, uh. What we have.
Uh, I, as I have the floor, uh, on, on another matter, uh, I, I think it's pertinent that. Uh, we follow up on our mandate about declaring racism of, of. A public health crisis in this town. And as it is Black History Month, um, uh, to adapt. The words, uh, uh, of, uh, uh, former President Kennedy. I, I think it's not us, not what the town could do, but what can we do as individuals? Especially individuals who hold power in this town. How will we, uh, flex and gently flex that power? To, uh, affect systematic racism and oppression? And, and what will we do as a body, this council, uh, do to do that? So I look for. To that partnership. Throughout Black History Month.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Mr. McDowell.
Uh, I just wanted to clarify the, the, uh, by the way, fo- fully agree with the prior statement. Um, but the next council meeting will be on Tuesday, the sixteenth. We'll be observing President's Day on the fifteenth?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks.
Alright, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm in.
Moved by Dr. Horsley, seconded by Mr. Farmer. All in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying or showing eye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, we are adjourned at nine twenty-two. Uh, thank you, Ms. Smith. Thank you, uh, Mr. Jackson for your time here this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Be safe.
Bye-bye, everyone. Yeah. Shovel lightly. Don't, don't throw your racks out. Bye-bye.